Good evening, everybody. If we could stand for a moment of silence. We're gonna have an extra moment of silence this evening for memories of the D-Day invasion, and we're also gonna do a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, and good evening to everybody, and welcome to the June 6th legislative meeting of the North Hill School District. I do want to let everybody know that prior to this, we did hold an executive session in the boardroom on Sixth Avenue, and also Mrs. Kathy Reed is joining us this evening by phone. So that being said, we can now move on to board member comments, if there are any.
I attended the opening of the Westview Hub last night along with a couple of other board members, Mrs. Spade and Mr. Bogus, and I just want to congratulate the Westview Hub on opening so quickly, and it is going to be a great resource, I think, for our students as well, because they have an internet café with free Wi-Fi, so I'm really looking forward to seeing what that can do for the community, and I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, it is. It was a great evening, I agree with you there. Any other comments?
The Westview Safe Summer Fair is on Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00, and we went last year. It's a lot of fun, they do, it's right outside of Westview Elementary, and they have a lot of presentations and activities for the kids, my kids really enjoyed it.
Saturday, 10:00 to 1:00, who sponsors that?
I think it's the PTO.
PTO, that's what I think, okay.
PTA.
PTA, okay, thank you. We can now move on to public comments on the agenda items only, so we would ask anybody who signed up to speak on agenda items can do that now, one at a time. Do we have anybody that signed up? If you would mind taking the podium, and your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Denise Peronis, I live on 98 Buckhill Road. I just had a question, and I was here last week regarding the taxes.
Yes.
I watched the video after the fact of you guys meeting after we left, and the lady with the dark hair had spoken, said that you were having 400 and some new students in the elementary school. I understand that. How many kids did you have graduate in the 12th grade this year?
The 476 is an increase in our total elementary population over the six-year period, so that has nothing to do with who graduated.
Why doesn't it? Because now you have kids leaving, and you have new kids coming, but how many buildings have been built in the North Hills to make up for the people who have either left North Hills or have come into North Hills? You have built up so much in the North Hills, I'm not understanding how you have to keep raising our taxes every single year. In the last couple of years, you have built up so many townhomes, so many homes, so much over on the McKnight Road, so I'm not understanding why our taxes keep getting raised. If our students want to keep doing instruments and stuff like that, have the parents pay for it too, or help out. When my kid came into North Hills, he wanted to do an instrument, I had to pay for it. Other schools make their kids buy instruments, go down and buy them. We cannot keep affording your tax increase. You have senior citizens that live in the North Hills that are on social security. I'm not understanding where the money is going, the gins are bringing in from all the new homes and all the townhomes, and the people that do not have children that come into the North Hills, and they're still paying the taxes. So maybe we need to relook at the books on what we're spending and what we're bringing in, because it's not making sense. I don't have a kid that's in school anymore, and my taxes are going up. The teachers, they keep getting raise after raise after raise. Is it time to say enough's enough for a couple of years? The pensions, I don't get somebody to pay for my husband's pension or my son's pension, he goes to work every day to pay for his own pension when he retires. But enough's enough, you're gonna chase out the people that lived in North Hills since they were young, and now they're senior citizens, they can't afford it anymore. They are on social security, social security doesn't keep up with your taxes that are being raised. But you need to rethink and relook. People cannot keep affording this. You give a great education, I get it, and I give kudos to you, my son got one, but you need to stop. It's seven years, enough's enough. Relook at your books, see what your income's coming in of all these people moving in, that's all I'm asking, because we can't keep up with your taxes. I don't want to leave North Hills, but we can't keep up with it. That's all I'm asking you to do, please.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody else who wants to speak on the public, on the agenda items only? Anybody else? Great, thank you. We can now move on to the approval of the minutes, and, I'm sorry, oh, I thought something said, okay. We can move on to the approval of the minutes, the board approved the minutes from May 2nd, 2019, work session legislative meeting, and May 9th, 2019 legislative meeting, per the attached, I will make that motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a solicitor's report this evening?
No.
Thank you. We can now move on, we have a presentation by our athletics director, Mrs. Amy Shuneman.
Good evening, obviously, I'm sure you're all here to hear my enthusiastic report of athletics here this evening, but I do have the distinct honor to report on all the great things going on in our school athletically, so I would go through this, occasionally I do this a number of times a year, but I've only done this once a year, once this year, so it's gonna be a little bit longer, so bear with me, and I will try to get through it to give the just due to those deserving. So we'll start with our football team. This year, they had six wins and four losses, they finished third in their section with a 5-2 overall record, and did qualify for the WPIL playoffs. We had a number of individual accomplishments, Larry Almertesi being named first-team all-section, PA All-State first-team, which is a great honor, and he participated in the Big 33, and the Pennsylvania team did win, so that was an awesome thing for him. Tyler Brennan was also a first-team selection, PA East-West All-Star Game participant, and again, a great honor. Brendan Manning, first-team, was a triathlete winner as well, and we had three other first-team all-section nominations in Keegan Bryant, Damon Thompson, and Dan Wagner, so a great group of guys there on the first-team all-section. We had four second-team all-section nominees with David Lucas, Ron Nova-Sedliak, Jason Biswick, and Seamus Conley, and three honorable mentions with Trevor Hartman, Tyler Tomasic, and Joe Ryan, so a great group of guys there. Our boys soccer team finished their overall season with seven wins, 10 losses, and a tie, and looking forward, they have some great numbers coming out, so I'm really looking forward to them improving next year. Our girls soccer team finished their season with five wins, 12 losses, and one tie, and two all-section awards there with Elena Longjohn being on the second team, and Olivia Yoder being named honorable mention. We had our cross-country teams that worked hard all year, one of the hardest-working teams, that they're always running, I think it's the "our sport is your team's punishment" pun for them, so they did a great job with finishing with the Whipple Championships there. The team record was, for the girls, was unfortunately, seven losses, and then the boys did defeat one team with six losses, but we had Joey Beener, who finished in the top 25, and was able to compete at the PIAA Championships as well. Our girls volleyball team had a final record of four wins, 11 losses, but they did place first at the Slippery Rock Tournament to start the season, and we had Kayla Hale with second-team all-section nomination there, and two honorable mentions in Rachel Bakely and Asia Neal. Our girls tennis team had a final record of four wins and 11 losses, and four participants at the section tournament, Emma Kim and Megan Schlipp participated in the section singles, while Alexa Whale and Julianne Eukardia, along with Emma and Megan, participated in the section doubles tournaments. Our golf team, they play out at Shanapin, and the JV team plays at Cloverhill, had an overall team record of two wins and nine losses. Moving on to the winter sports teams, our boys basketball team had a final record of six wins and 16 losses, with Jordan Albright being named to the first-team all-section. He was also named the TrivLive High School Sports Network Player of the Week on January 19, I'm sorry, January 29, 2019. The girls basketball team had a final record of four wins and 18 losses, with Lexi Kotwika being named to the second-team all-section team. Our wrestling team had a team record of seven wins and 10 losses, and we had Whipple qualifiers in Sam Hillegas, Jeremy McPherson, Damon Thompson, and Matt Sorawaka, and they all finished in the top five in our section, as you can see there. Sam Hillegas continued his outstanding career as being the Shar Houston Invite Champion, Powerade Champion, Section Champion, Whipple Champion, and in unforgettable PIAA run, had a great semifinal match, but unfortunately, lost to the eventual champion, and ended up earning the bronze medal at the state level, and he was also named the Post-Gazette Athlete of the Week on January 23rd. Our swimming and diving team had a great season, they had the final record for the girls was eight wins and four losses, and they finished in 12th place at the WPIL, and our boys team had a section record of three wins and nine losses, finishing 17th at the Whipple meet. We had 19 qualifiers in that meet, as you can see them listed there, and five of those individuals also qualified for the PIAA meet. There's a fine picture of those qualifiers. And the Whipple medalists for North Hills was in the 200 free relay, they placed fifth with Matty Mahoney, Sarah Grace Kuchma, Matty Cordial, and Chloe Salepak, and then Matty Mahoney also placed fifth in the 100 free, Josh Bignard placed sixth in the 100, and Matt McHugh received two medals, seventh in the 100 free, or 50 free, and eighth in the 100 free. A lot of those individuals also broke school records, which was a great feat, some of those stood for over 20 years, so we had the 100 free broken by Matty Mahoney, and the 200 free relay by the same group of girls, and then the 100 backstroke was broken by Josh Bignard. Our cheerleaders went on, they compete for the competitive sphere titles, and they did well enough at the Whipple Championships to qualify to compete at the PIAA Championships, and they also received a bid to nationals and made it to the finals in the large varsity non-tumbling game day competition, so a lot of pictures there of them. We had three individuals who signed the official national letter of intent, so they were going on athletic scholarships only to play at institutions in their sport. Tyler Brennan will play football at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, Julia Jamison will play lacrosse at St. Francis University, and Larry Almertesi will play football at the Naval Academy, very proud of their accomplishments. We do have club sports at North Hills, and they were very successful this year, so I'd like to report on them as well. Our ice hockey team had a final record of 13 wins and five losses, they qualified for the playoffs, and won their opening game as well. They had three All-Star selections in Liam O'Neal, Ian Keller, and Ethan Isley. Our slow-pitch softball team, the varsity team, had the best season in school history by finishing with a final record of 11 wins and three losses, and they were seeded second and in second in the playoffs with a 13-team varsity division, they were the number-two team there. Inline hockey had a varsity record of 14 wins and 10 losses, and they were the PIRHL High School Division III Champions, once again, they earned this accomplishment in a couple of years. The bowling team, a little bit of a rebuilding year, as they had a very successful year last year, the boys team had three wins and seven losses, while the girls had the inverse of seven wins and three losses this year, and Dawn Albert qualified for the individual Our spring sports, so with baseball, we had a team record of three and 15, with Jordan Albright making a first-team selection, and Drew Garth was honorable mention selection. Softball had an overall team record of 13 wins and six losses, a number of individual recognition there, with three players making the second team, in Callie Kretzler, Leslie Rozansky, and Melanie Taylor, and three honorable mention selections in Lauren Barnes, Matty Trob, and Shay Hagerman. Boys lacrosse had a final record of 10 wins and six losses, they qualified for the WPIL playoffs and won the first round game against Knox, this was the first playoff win for that program in school history, so a great accomplishment for them, and they had a number of individual awards as well, with Christian James and Max Bauer being named to the first-team all-section, with four, I'm sorry, five honorable mention selections in Evan Felts, Alex Kraus, Demi Iarussa, Austin Isley, and Ian Keller. Our girls lacrosse team had a final record of 10 wins and seven losses, with two first-team selections in Julia Jamison and Mara Rupert, and three honorable mention selections with Gianna DiPaola, Megan Worster, and Michaela Sims. Our boys volleyball team this year had an overall record of three wins and 15 losses, I'm sorry, that's the wrong final record, it was three wins and 15 losses, while Byron Spear was the second-team all-section nomination. Our track and field team had an overall team record, one win and five losses for the girls, and no wins for the boys, however, we did have a number of Whipple qualifiers, 13 Whipple qualifiers, and we had two Whipple medalists, Tommy McDonough earned three of those medals, third place in the 400 meter, fifth place in the 100 meter, and sixth place in the 200 meter, while Elena Longjohn received a medal at the Whipple for fourth place in the triple jump. Both of those two qualified for the PIAA Championship meet out in Schippenberg. Boys tennis was a great year for participation numbers, we really got the numbers back up on that program, they had a final record of five wins and nine losses, with Connor McKeon, Duncan Kreps, Nate Beilich, and Matt Ventura all representing North Hills at the section tournaments, be it through singles or doubles participation. And while we do not allow the scoreboard to define us, there are so many other things that our student athletes and varsity club are involved with here at North Hills, and I just wanted to recognize some of the accomplishments that they have done collectively to move our district and themselves forward. Some of those things are continuing to host multiple pep rallies, one per season, to get the community involved and excited about each of those seasons. We recognize local veterans during the home football games, and we purchased a new Team GPA banner that's hung in the annex to recognize the accomplishments of the team with the highest GPA, and recognizing academics. We took 10 male student athletes to a leadership seminar this past fall, we hosted a jump rope fundraiser and donated the money to the American Heart Association. We helped facilitate and attend the WPIL Summit on Sportsmanship. In November and April, we had numerous student athletes go to our elementary schools to reach the kindergarten and first-grade classes. We installed a new electronic record board in the annex hallway, which is also available online, which preserves the history and records of the North Hills School District athletic programs. We have a new pool scoreboard, thanks to the generous donation of Matt Mertz Plumbing, and in May, we hosted the college-bound student athlete recognition reception, which you can see here, a picture from, and we had 16 student athletes who are using their athletic endeavors to play at the collegiate level, all of those listed there, so we're very proud of our programs for at least providing the opportunity for them to advance their careers at the collegiate level. And I'd like to take this moment, just to thank the North Hills School District for a great three years that I've been employed here, and I wish everybody much success in board, I hope you have a great school year and moving forward with the district, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. For those of you who don't know, Amy is gonna be leaving us at the end of June, it's June 30th, I think, and she's gonna be the new Associate Executive Director at the WPIL, so best wishes to you, Amy, you're a well-deserved situation for you. Thanks again for your service here, thank you. Next, we have Chief Dean Lawrence on the safety and security update for the school.
Hi, good evening. Just want to take time to say thank you to all the board members and Dr. Mauro Reno for all the hard work we have put into making a school police department for North Hills School District. When we started this, one of the main things that we talked about was relationships, and I think we've had great success with relationships as it relates to the students, the teachers, the other staff members, board members, and I'd like to report on that tonight. As of February 25th, each school was staffed with one officer, that officer will be in place at all times during the school day. Relationships are being built, I've had a lot of great feedback from students, parents, and staff. In January, I was able to put out anti-vaping and dab pen usage public service announcement with the assistance of the counseling department at the high school. I was able to meet with the GSA Club, the SAD Club, Varsity Club, French Club, German Club, and Latin Club over the last school year. Each one of them were able to give me some feedback on the school, and also, I was able to talk to them about school police and how their club could be a role model and lead our North Hills schools. Officer Loesch was successful in starting a girls group at the Westview Elementary School. She had been working at Westview Elementary when a group of female students had asked her, why can't they have a club and a group with the police like the male students do? So she approached me, and we were able to successfully start a group with her. She has over 30 years of law enforcement, and the girls were very happy to be with her and have a once-a-week meeting with her.
Just a point of clarification on that, the boys group was through Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and it was through the, with the police officers.
That's correct.
That's why they couldn't have women in that particular group.
That's correct, yes. So it just happened to be that Westview has no female officers, so, you know, they were at this advantage that they could not do anything with the female students. Officer Steinheiser was able to give a talk with four different classes on the juvenile justice system, after they had read a book on crime and delinquency. The book is titled Monster, and it's about a 16-year-old male student who was in jail for murder. Officer Steinheiser is also working with the middle school gate students with their fish tank and their lizard display, and we didn't know that he was a fish and lizard aficionado when we hired him, but the gate students quickly found out he knew a lot about fish and a lot about lizards, and he always wanted me to pet the lizard, and I don't pet lizards. Officer Steinheiser recently got mentioned by two different seniors in the Arrowhead on how great he was at saying hello every morning. Actually, one of the students called out the other students that did not say hello back, and they said how you could not say hello to Officer Steinheiser with his big smile every morning. Officer Lagoon worked with Principal Bilderbach to do a drug and vaping program with the sixth grade classes at High Cliff Elementary. We hope to expand this to all sixth grade during the next school year. Officer Lagoon, who some people may or may not know is a professional piano player, he accompanied the sixth-grade band, the combined band, during their concert just March 20th. It was a really great experience for him, he got to know a different dynamic of the school than some of the other ones that some of the other officers were able to do. Officer Bosong is our chess club member, and he's a member of the chess club at the high school, and he also started playing chess and checkers with the students during their morning care. He found out that Westview Elementary was the only elementary school that did not have a chess club, so he was able to take on his own a chess club, and after hours, he has a chess club. They averaged 25 students, 31 the very last week, the youngest being in kindergarten, and he is probably one of the better players, according to Officer Bosong. I got to witness during graduation, three of his students walk up to him, they were kindergarten and first grade, and they walked past every single officer that was standing there just to see Officer Bosong and shake his hand. He's very good about making them look each other in the eye, shake hands after they're done, so that was one of the things that I noticed, the kindergartner and the first-grader came up to Officer Bosong and shook his hand and looked him directly in the eye, and said thank you. We sponsored Nastro basic school resource officer classes, they'll start next week. Some of our officers were already trained in it, but I was able to sponsor the class at North Hills School District. Because we sponsor the class, we get to send our officers for free, it was a savings of almost $2,000 to the district, just so that we could provide this space for one week. We have officers coming in from as far as Boise, Idaho, to attend this class. This will complete all of our officers will be Nastro School Resource Officers trained. We also, because we sponsored this class, I had an extra slot available, so Sergeant Sarowick from Ross Township will be attending the class for free also. Sergeant Sarowick was provided and directed by Chief Lay from Ross Township to be a liaison directly to the school district. It's worked out very well, because before, we always had to go with the shift commander or whoever was on duty, but now, he mostly works daylight, so I can text him, he emails back and forth with me. He's pretty responsible about coordinating anything that we need, every time we need extra officers, they're providing them, and anytime we need additional support, he's able to provide it. Westview also has Lieutenant Holland assigned to us, and there again, he's directly linked to me via text and email, so it makes it very nice that we don't have to go through a county dispatch just to talk to our police officers, and our local police officers are very responsible to us and help us out in many different ways. I recently was certified as a SAP team member, that's Student Assistance Program, and as of today, Officer Loesch and Steinheiser completed their certifications. Sometime in the next year, we hope to have all officers trained as SAP team members. It's very important to us that they sit in on these teams, because these teams are built on counselors, and teachers, and administrators, and outside resources, but our officers have pretty good connections with some of the students, and they see what's going on day-to-day. Many times, they have insight that sometimes because they're police officers, or just because they've been in the rooms or in the cafeteria, they see the certain students who stand out for whatever reason. As of today, we have completed over 1,100 hours of training for the entire department. Equipment, we're just finishing up installing radio repeaters. These radio repeaters are mounted inside several of our buildings within the school district, and that makes us capable of utilizing 10 portable radios, and we can talk within the district between each of our officers, and it also gives us direct access to 911. We don't have to dial a phone, we can call directly into 911 if we have an emergency. This was completed primarily on a grant that we received from the Department of Education Office of Safe Schools. I've also been working with Dr. Taylor on several other safety grants, emergency operation procedures, and other training, and I'm sure we're gonna continue to do this after Dr. Taylor leaves, and my relationship with Dr. Williams is extremely strong, and we hope to continue what Dr. Taylor's started for us. Next year, next year I want to start a student safety committee. I've already been in contact with multiple students who are juniors or seniors, and they've expressed interest in helping us out. I was able to obtain this idea from some national training I went to recently, and I thought it would work out really well, because we have a lot of very responsible students in our district, and they have an opinion. Sometimes what we think as adults is safe or Sometimes what we think is adults is safe or safety is not what they're thinking, and sometimes what we think might be scary or dangerous, they think is just normal in their lives. So it'll be really good for us to sit down with these students and find out what they're thinking and what they can suggest that we can help them and help us understand what we can do better to have them feel safe in their school and be safe. I want to work next year on a possible breakfast program with our young men's minority groups. There's a disorganized group of minority students that our officers have identified that we want to try to get connected with. It's probably one of the most difficult things I think I'm going to be attempting, but I've had some positive feedback from a couple of our minority students that they would like to get together with us and at least have a free breakfast. We want to roll out anti-vaping smoking program for the entire district. This is a plague that's occurring nationwide. It's not just our school. It is something that we talk to the students about, and many of the students are very upset that it continues to happen in their school, but it's happening in all schools across the nation. So we want to try to roll that out to our sixth-grade students, and Officer Lagoon's already started some of our program, and we're going to use our former dare officer, Much, and he's going to help lay out some ground rules and some different possibilities when it comes to that. We're completing some upgrades to window markings and doors at the schools. These are just national standards so that the emergency responders can see where the windows and doors are. We have another risk and vulnerability assessment going to be completed by the Pennsylvania State Police to just see where we're at, especially if we're in the norms of what national standards are. And lastly, we've been approached by a parent who works with emergency search dogs, Air Search and Rescue, about doing some training in the schools after hours during next year. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions for?
I have a couple of questions. When we first rolled out the School Resource Officers last year, there were some concerns about disciplining and who would be disciplining the kids. And I think that there may have been some learning curves, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, you know, how that's been going as far as, you know, I know we've talked about this, you know, informally, and that the principals are responsible is our policy for disciplining the children, and maybe you could kind of speak to how that's gone this year, how that, you know, relationship has gone.
The relationship built over the year. At first, obviously, our officers were reluctant to engage students based more on our regulation that we put on them. So I think they were more hesitant to have conversations that they should be having with students. So we've actually worked with especially our administrators at the middle school and high school, and I don't, we had no problems, absolutely no problems. We probably had more problems of we need to probably engage the students more, and that's at the direction of the principals. But...
But again, it's at their direction. It's not, I mean, they're a hundred percent involved and, yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes they're not available. So especially at the high school and the middle school, as our officers were more connected with the principals, especially via text, sometimes certain students that we knew were our problem students, we were able to text directly with that principal and let them know what was going on, even though they were in a meeting or tied up. We could get them to a place of safety, which is usually, you know, a suspension room until the principal could get there. But no, there really wasn't any change. I would say we probably were more reluctant to have certain conversations with students.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. We can now move on to education. Mrs. Mathis?
Thank you. Before I go over the formal items, I would like to ask Dr. Manorino to provide a brief update on the sixth-grade transition and plans for organizing that over the summer.
So either next week or the week after, we'll be meeting with the PTO presidents of the four schools to begin brainstorming and talking about the transition ideas and really to begin to talk about members from those organizations that they would like to appoint to a committee. We'll be meeting with the teachers in August, the sixth-grade teachers in August, and then in a similar fashion, work with them to create a committee. And I'm hoping to meet at least once a month with that committee as we transition our fifth grade students into sixth grade at the middle school. So that's what the plan really looks like for next year, so it is really going to get started here in the next week or so. As soon as Mrs. Matthew and I can coordinate our schedules to see when we could get the presidents together, and then anybody from the board that would like to join us, we'll certainly give you guys the dates, and you can come and join us with that committee. I know that a lot of the dates are starting to come in to Heather for the calendar for next year. A lot of the organizations are meeting with the principals to come up with those final dates for both fifth and sixth grade activities. I know for sure that we have a fifth grade track and field date and a sixth grade track and field date on the calendar scheduled for next year, so those are the little pieces that are starting to come together. But now that the school year's over, we can really now begin to roll up our sleeves and focus on what that transition is going to look like, so it's going to start as early as next week.
I think we'd also discuss possibly putting together an FAQ page on the website, which I think is a great idea for parents.
Yeah, so that's something that Heather and I will work on and put out, that frequently asked questions list, and that'll just continue to grow as we kind of go through the process.
Thank you. Okay. Most of these items I actually discussed at length last week, but I'm going to go through them again quickly because I know some people were not present. The first is a request for the board to approve a textbook adoption for the 2019-2020 school year. That's a psychology textbook. Next is a request for the board to approve the dual agreement, dual enrollment agreement with CCAC. A request for the board to approve the affiliation agreement with California University of We have a request for the board to approve a $5,000 donation from Plymouth Rock Management Company. That came from a parent of a first-grade student from McIntyre Elementary School who nominated Ms. Horner for a teacher appreciation contest. Ms. Horner was selected as the winner for the state of Pennsylvania, and she was gifted a SPA gift card, and the district will receive a $5,000 donation to upgrade the teacher's lounge at McIntyre Elementary School. The next several items are bid awards and bid rejections. The first is a request for the board to award the bid for elementary music chairs to Delaney and Associates in the amount of $3,159 and reject all bids for musical stands and choral risers. This provision was made in the 2019-2020 curriculum budget, and the board already sort of reviewed these back in February when music, the music department provided their curriculum recommendations. The next is a request for the board to approve the purchase of replacement choral risers in the amount of $35,366. As I mentioned last week, these risers are approximately thirty years old and have well outlasted their expected lifespan. The next is a request for the board to award the bids for the music instruments to the attached bidders totaling $151,835 and 10 cents and reject bids for the four-four tuba and glockenspiel for the high school. Next is a request for the board to award the bid for choral robes to Harif Jones in the amount of $22,856. The choral robes have also been around for about twenty-five years. Ms. Kuzera wore them back in her day, so they've also exceeded their lifespan. The last, I'm not saying that you have exceeded yours. The last two items are new. The first is a request for the board to approve the Educational Services Agreement with the Meadows Psychiatric Center. This agreement allows for educational services to be provided to any district student that may be hospitalized at the Meadows Psychiatric Center through the duration of this contract. The contract is in effect for the 2019-2020 and 2020-21 school years. The cost is $67 per day, and this is an increase of $2 per hour from a previous contract. Last but not least, I have a request for the board to approve the 2019-2020 Services Agreement with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. The AIU provides specialized educational services to Allegheny County's forty-two suburban school districts, five vocational and technical schools, and numerous other organizations throughout the area. Items listed in the 2019-2020 AIU Educational Services Agreement are budgeted items in the 2019-2020 budget. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve education items one through ten.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry. Kathy has a question?
Oh, Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. The bid award for the musical instruments, are they replacement or are they all new?
I believe that they're replacing instruments that have exceeded their lifespan, and some of them are new due to the increased enrollment in the music program, largely due to the increased enrollment in the elementary schools.
Oh, at the elementary? Okay. I was just wondering, because that was a lot of money. Is it why we needed all those instruments?
Well, um...
You answered that.
Okay. Yeah, the instruments are very well cared for, and they do last a long time. Most of them are more than thirty years old, but I know the music department does an excellent job taking care of them, so they've exceeded their lifespan.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. We can now move on to athletics. No, we didn't. Yeah, we didn't, yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay. We can now move on to athletics and activities. Mrs. Kuzera?
I have a resolution and an announcement.
We did vote on it.
Yeah, we did, Kath. We voted.
Oh, did we?
I'll make a move. We have a second, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I have a resolution and an announcement. The resolution is that the board approve Resolution 2019-11 recognizing the North Hills Girls Soccer Boosters and as an official booster organization of the North Hills School District. The North Hills Girls Soccer Boosters constitutes a charitable organization as defined in the Local Option Small Games of Chance Act and seek approval as an official booster organization. The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve Athletics and Activities, item one.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
The announcement is the North Hills Sports Hall of Fame inductees for 2019. The following, the Sports Hall of Fame, which is separate from the school board and the school district, it's a separate organization, the selection committee met on May 8th. The following were selected from the nominees and will be inducted into the 2019 Sports Hall of Fame on September 12th, 2019. Arlene Bender, posthumously, community supporter. Arlene Bender was one of the founding members of the North Hills Sports Hall of Fame. She served as a school board member for nearly thirty-five years and was an avid supporter of the North Hills Athletics and Activities. Ken Bolins III, class of 1994, along with me. Ken Bolins was a three-sport athlete at North Hills, participating in the sports of football, basketball, and baseball. He was named first-team all-conference as a wide receiver. He is the North Hills all-time single-season record holder for pass receptions. Joseph Kush, class of 2011. Joe Kush participated in the sports of cross-country and track and field at North Hills. He was a nine-time Whipple medalist, a four-time PIA double-A state medalist, and a four-time PIA double-A state top-ten finisher. Shannon Rankin, class of 1998. Shannon Rankin was a three-sport athlete at North Hills. She participated in the sports of soccer, basketball, and track and field. She earned ten varsity letters at North Hills and was named team captain for both the soccer and track team. Curtis Rice, class of 1980. Curtis Rice was a three-sport athlete at North Hills, participating in football, basketball, and track and field. It was in the sport of football that Curtis excelled as a three-year starter. He was all-conference selected as a member of the Post Gazette Fabulous 22 and named to the All-State Team. Congratulations to all those recipients, and I look forward to the event on September 12th.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to Beatty Tech. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Nudi, I don't know if you have anything this evening for Beatty, but...
I have nothing.
Okay. Thank you. We can now move on to personnel, and that would be Mrs. Spade.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session. Therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve items one through three.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Mrs. Reed, are you prepared to do community and intergovernmental relations?
I think, unless somebody else wants to do it. I think I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
We have to...
The floor is yours.
We need to appoint, approve for appointees for the voting delegates for the PSBA Delegate Convention, which will be held on October 18th, 2019. Anybody on the board want to put their name in via voting delegate?
I think we already have three volunteers.
Yeah, we have done that already.
Yes. Mrs. Mathis, Ms. Kuzera, and Mr. Nudi have volunteered.
Oh, okay. That's wonderful. Well, then, all we need to do now is vote.
Right.
Okay. We just need, I make a recommendation that we accept the three, Mrs. Mathis, Mrs. Kuzero, and Mr. Nudi, to be appointed to be our three voting delegates to 2019 Delegate Assembly, which will occur on October 18th, 2019.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to all three.
Thank you.
We can, legislative, Mr. Nudi, is there anything under legislative?
No, other than House Bill or Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 are seeming to be lingering, but I think with the current publicity, they're going to get moved off in the start of the next session. I'm going to spend the summer dedicated to those two particular bills.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to add with that, we mentioned to you earlier in May that these are the bills that would save us over a million dollars annually in budget, and there's your tax increase right there. If we could get some help from the Pennsylvania Legislature so that we do not have to double pay for cyber charter schools, when we offer our own cyber charter, cyber option here in the North Hills School District, these are bills that would give school districts across the state relief from paying that double price tag of the cyber charter school tuition. And it's all based on cyber charter school reform. And we mentioned in May that when the time came, we would be putting some things out on the North Hills website. I know Heather is planning to do that, so, you know, please continue, even though school is not in session, watch the website and, you know, look for that because we're going to ask for your help as taxpayers to get that message to Harrisburg because it helps us all. So I'd just like to second that, and appreciate that Mr. Nudi's taken the lead this summer on working with that.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Nudi?
The unfortunate thing here is only about half of the school districts in the state operate through our own cyber charters. So, yeah, fifty percent of the schools are not really behind this legislation because they don't have any skin in the game like we do. So, but I think there's enough fur going right now that we're going to see the House and Senate leader moving off the dime and getting something done this fall.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. We can now move on to finance. Dr. Nolish.
Okay, well, now we're at the difficult part of the budget here, so we have these resolutions. We spent a lot of time talking last week, and I don't want to repeat a lot of what is being said, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things. Again, you know, I can't say strongly enough, there's nothing we would like better and that I would like personally, to deliver you a zero tax increase. That's where we start, that's where we try, that's what we hope to happen, but we're not in a position to do that, and a lot of things are out of our control. The cyber charter bill is one of them. We can get some help there. The pension funds, which I know is frustrating when you hear about it and you think about, oh, it's related to the current teachers, but one thing I want to point out is the biggest piece of that pension bill has nothing to do with our current teachers. It has to do with the fact that the Pennsylvania Legislature and governor many years ago did not manage the pension fund well. Pennsylvania at one time had a totally funded pension fund. It was balanced. They used the money for other things, they never replaced it. And now we, the taxpayers, the school district, we're paying for them. We are paid, we are paying for that. It's a mandated requirement. We have no choice. The state sends us a bill, tells us how much we're going to pay. The state sends us a bill, tells us how much we're going to pay. So, again, that's something, pension reform is something that we can work on legislatively. I think it's going to be a lot harder even than charter school reform, but I hope that down the line, it's something that we can work on. So, again, I hope in the future that maybe that conversation can change, but again, that's something that's out of our control that we need help from the state with. And the last point is, you know, as much as it's true that our tax revenues have increased over the past six years, but our costs have gone up far faster, and we have done everything we can as a district to try to manage our costs, to try to pass as little of those increases on to the taxpayer as possible. And, you know, I truly believe that, you know, we're all in this together, we've cut our belt, you know, we've tightened our belts, we've cut things, we've, you know, we've had our, you know, we've worked very hard to try to get those numbers down. And so, you know, we have to ask you as taxpayers for the, you know, to work with us for the future of our kids and for the, you know, the future financial stability of the district, that we just have to come together as a community. So, that is, you know, so that's where we are.
You're going to do these probably individually.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's, you know, that's where we are, and that's my, you know, just to kind of reiterate some of the key points that I'd like people to keep in mind as we take. What I know is a really difficult vote.
Dr. Nolish, if you don't mind, we had talked about this at a previous meeting, but not at last week's meeting. There was a comment earlier about the increase in housing, that, you know, that there are some new developments that have been built, and I think Mr. Hall discussed, or maybe it was earlier in May, about how the increase in housing doesn't necessarily equate to a comparable increase in revenue from a real estate tax perspective. I wonder if that could be reiterated.
Yeah, Mr. Hall, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Not to put you on the spot.
Well, I think he can handle it.
Since it's a repeat from what you told us earlier and when not everybody may have been at that meeting.
You know, there has been obviously some construction in the community. Essentially, the big ones are the housing development. I'm sorry. There's obviously been some construction in the community, the biggest one being at the former country club, with some housing in there and townhomes, that have mostly gotten on the tax rolls. Those have increased our total assessed value by a couple of percentages. Combine that with the point-four percent or point-four-mill tax increase being proposed, and you're looking at still less than a three percent increase in your largest revenue source, the only revenue source that we have any control over, and generates a, what, about a two percent increase in revenues? Well, our costs are going up by more than two percent. It's just math.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the time for discussion was before the, I understand, but we...
He has to stick the right back.
He is, he is, but there's, the discussion is, I'm sorry, but the public discussion's over. You had a chance to talk earlier.
Let's tell the truth. Let's tell the truth.
Are you finished?
Again, there are other properties being built? Not a lot. There are a few townhomes.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Three townhomes is nothing.
Could you please, he's trying to speak. Were you getting the truth?
All of the properties that have been developed were included in my numbers, not just the ones at the country club. Country club was my example of the sizable development. It and the Northway Block are the only two sizable developments that have occurred in the district. The other developments are relatively small in the community this size.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Nolish?
Okay, so, if, the first resolution is 2019-9, establishing the tax rate at eighteen-point-six-five mils. The superintendent recommends and I so move that we enact Finance Item Number One.
Second.
What are we doing? Who's the second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm confused. What are we doing?
We're doing number one first, the resolution for the...
We're doing each individual item on the finance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have said that.
That's okay.
We have to break these out.
Yeah.
We have to first establish a tax rate. Second, we have to establish the homestead, farmstead, which is for, which provides the discount, the homestead exclusion for folks that, which is most of our community, folks that, where their home, that they own is their primary residence. And then, then we need to do the budget, which is separate, and then the other operating finance items we'll do as a group.
Okay. Okay, so we have a second. Is there any discussion on item number one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's do number two.
Okay, number two is the Resolution 29-10, which establishes the homestead, farmstead exclusion. The superintendent recommends and I so move that we approve Finance Item Number Three.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we have item number five, which is the 2019-20 final budget approval. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve Finance Item Five, the 2019-20 final budget.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to lead the discussion on this if you give me a few minutes. I mentioned that the, I guess it was the first meeting in May, that when we talked about the budget and the tax increase and all that went along with, I promised that I would go through that budget basically line by line, and I pretty much did, spent a lot of time going over the, over the budget, as well as, I think we have to come at this from a historical perspective, because I think it's important for all of us to remember where we've been and how far we've come. So, I just put together this, with the help of Heather here, just put together this PowerPoint to give you some idea where we are and what I found, and I know to be true, because it's in the documents. But the first slide says, "Over the past seven years, the enrollment in the elementary schools has increased by four hundred and seventy-six students. This increase has required the district to hire twenty additional elementary teachers. Because of class size, policies, et cetera, we had to do that, and so as a result of that, over the past seven years, we've absorbed approximately at least one-point-two million dollars in cost just by adding the additional elementary teachers." Next one, if you wouldn't mind. "The district has also added four special education teachers, two reading specialists, one speech therapist, and four math specialists at approximate cost of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so that's in addition to the one-point-two million that we have had to hire over the last seven years." I found that this year, we talked about this, the charter school tuition this year is one-point-two million dollars for the current year. A couple of things that I just want, I think people, that we all need to understand and why this is so out of kilter. First of all, I'm one of those folks who, I'm not a, I don't have a problem with school competition. I think I would be glad to put our charter school, our district, up against any of the private schools, and I don't mean, I'm talking about the charter schools in general. The issue we have here with the charter schools, and I've had for a lot, and I think all the board has this issue, is the fact that when you open up a charter school and you start charter school and you get, you get your license to do so, if it costs you four or five thousand dollars a year to educate a student, which it normally does in most charter schools, that seems to be the average, we send, and correct me if I'm wrong here, we send for each student that goes to a charter school other than ours, we send that school over eleven thousand dollars a year to educate that student. So, what happens is, it may cost them five thousand dollars to educate that student, we send them eleven. Guess where the other seven goes? Or six? It goes in their pocket. It's a profit. So, that's kind of why I think what our complaint is when it comes to the charter school issue is, it's out of whack. We, I don't think any of us, any of us would mind sending them a charter school what it costs them to educate the student. And if you do your research, you'll find that the performance of these charter schools is well below anything that our school district is doing these days, including our own charter school. So, that, for our, from our perspective, is something that has to be changed, and has to be changed immediately, but it doesn't seem, and I think Lou, you had mentioned you're going to get involved in that, but that's a huge, a huge, and I personally believe that there's probably, if we just sent them what it costs them to educate these students, we're probably looking at about five to six hundred thousand dollars in savings, of all of which is probably going into the pockets of those who chartered, who start charter schools. So, if you wanted to get into a good business, start a charter school. You don't have to worry about performance, just to worry about getting paid, and we have to pay that whether we like it or not. So, next slide. "Our special education costs have increased eighteen percent since 2014. They've gone from seven-point-nine million to nine-point-five million." I don't have a problem with this, because I know what it costs for us to educate those with special needs. I have three nephews that have severe special needs and are in school, and I, we do a great job with that. The problem I do have is all of the mandates that the state puts on our district and all of the districts to do this, and we don't, I don't think we get fairly reimbursed for asking us to do what they insist we do. So, there's, there is, from my perspective, there's probably a few million dollars in here that we could use more than what they're sending, what they're sending us now to help subsidize these, this education, but I want to emphasize, I know myself, and I'm sure there's nobody sitting on this board today that is against special education or cutting anything that goes along with special education. So, that's something we have to do, we're required to do it, we can't get around it, but we're just concerned that we don't get a subsidy enough to get the needs met that we have to do for these special ed students. Over the past five years, this one makes this point, over the past five years, our pension costs have risen one-hundred-and-twenty-seven percent, from five-point-three million to twelve-point-seven million per year. Over the past eleven years, the retirement costs have risen more than five-hundred percent. Okay? Now, I want to just make this very clear, because I know some folks maybe have taken myself out of context, and I believe that every board member stands with me in this. Nobody's advocating on this board that we change the pension plan for those people that are already in it. That's not what we're saying. This is, this is, this is a law, as we mentioned earlier, that has been handed down to us by our, by the infinite wisdom of our legislators, and they've passed this law, and they said they're going to have this program and we're going to fund it, us, the taxpayers. So, no matter what happens, we don't have, we really don't have a say in this cost, we just get a bill at the end of the year. If I, Dave, am I saying that properly? I mean, it's basically, here's the bill, and sometimes we got to guess on what that is. So, we're budgeting for a number that we don't even know is going to be the right number. It could be more, it could be less, but in most cases, it's been more. So, the biggest problem here, you can see that, I mean, we're talking over thirteen, fourteen million dollars that this has gone up from since, in five years, or at least thirteen million, almost thirteen, in the past eleven years, it's gone up over five-hundred percent. Now, I don't know of anybody who can withstand those kinds of increases in expenses and still be standing, and I have to, I have to say for our district, I think it's important for us to note, over the last ten years, we have been putting away money for these kinds of things. We haven't been putting away enough, because we just don't have enough to fund it all, but we are funding it, and we are, we've put away a reserve, because we knew these kinds of things were going to occur. And by the way, there are a lot of districts out there that are in deep whatever, because of the fact that these pension costs are coming due and they don't have an escrow account to tap, which we do. So, we've kind of planned for this, we haven't planned for a five-hundred percent tax increase over eleven years, but we've been able to absorb it, but only to a certain extent. Next, so in the last, here's a couple of things I think that we need to, we need to clarify or at least understand. Over the last eleven years, if some folks, and I know we've, and rightfully so in some cases with some districts, have been criticized with wages and benefits, et cetera, over the last eleven years, our school district has seen an increase, this is a total of eleven years now, of nine-point-four-nine percent in total wages for the district, which means our wages for the last, basically, eleven years has gone up less than one percent. Okay? Total dollars, less than one percent. Here's another thing, I don't know if most of us could say this, our medical benefits for the last eleven years have increased by only two-point-one percent, which basically is point-two-five percent per year on average, medical benefits. I don't know of anybody in this room who could say that their medical benefits over the last eleven years, or their medical costs, have gone up total of two-point-one percent. This is not every year, this is a total of almost eleven years, two-point-one percent. So, when you look at some of these things, have we done what we supposed, we were supposed to do? Yes, and part of those savings is because this board several years ago had the insight, it was kind of a difficult thing to do, obviously, but we closed some schools, because we knew going forward, we just couldn't afford what we were facing over the next ten to fifteen years. A lot of this is a result of that, but in essence, when you look at what we've done over the last eleven years, our wages, again, from a taxpayer's perspective, our wages have gone up less than one percent per year for the last eleven years. So, I don't know if there's another one there or not. Couple of things here, to efficiently meet our student growth and utilize our current building space, we are, of course, we all know we're moving the sixth grade to the hilltop, that's at approximate cost of eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That's a minimal expenditure in comparison to spending money on a new building or adding to an existing building. So, we do have the space, our, because of our elementary growth, again, we go back and look at four-hundred-and-seventy-six new students on the elementary side, we have the space up on the hilltop. So, we decided rather than build a building, which would be millions of dollars, and try to find a spot to build that building, or add on to an existing building, we decided, which I think was the right thing to do, even though there is a cost of approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to do all this, to move the sixth grade to the hilltop. So, we didn't incur a larger expense of another building. So, do we have any, oh. So, one of the other things I do want to mention, we talked about real estate tax revenues. Our current real estate tax revenue has risen nine percent since two-hundred-and-fourteen, since two thousand and fourteen, or about one-and-a-half percent per year. But here's, according to what I found and what I was able to decipher out through the actual tax increases, our actual tax increases over the last six or seven years, they're approximately one-point-one percent per year. The additional point-four percent is coming from improved, improved real estate and sales. In other words, the country club and things of that nature, there have been some different sales where assessments have gone up, but the point I'm trying to make is if you look at the actual tax increases, not the tax revenue, but the tax increase, it's been about one-point-one percent per year, and the other four-point-four percent is coming from new and improved real estate sales. Another one. Lastly, the last time Allegheny County, over the years, those of you that are old enough to remember this, over the years, prior to two thousand and twelve, I guess it was, and even before that, the county would reassess properties. So, as a result, as a reassessment, revenues would go up, because assessments would go up based on values. The last time they did anything was two thousand and twelve, which is really put all of the school districts kind of behind the eight ball, because now we're forced to raise revenues otherwise. To adjust for that reassessment, I just, historically, the North Hills millage rate was reduced from twenty-one-point-two-six mils to seventeen-point-oh-six mils back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, and then twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. So, over the past seven to eight years, we have had millage rates go down based on revenues and laws that were passed with respect to the, our ability to raise taxes or not raise taxes, but over those last seven years, we did have some reduction in millage, and some substantial reductions, to be honest with you, in those years of twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, and twenty thirteen, and twenty fourteen. So, I just thought it was important for all of us to look at it from a historical perspective, like where have we come from, where have we been, and where are we going, and based on just a few things, just to recap, I don't know if I have another slide, I don't think I do. Oh, okay. "Over the past six years, total revenues have risen twelve percent or two percent per year. Our expenditures have risen eighteen percent or approximately three percent a year." So, as Mr. Hall said earlier, we are, we are spending, or at least our expenditures have risen faster than our revenues. Most of that has to do with the charter school expense and the pension expense, obviously, and of course, the fact that we've had to add twenty-some teachers in our elementary schools, because we had to by the fact that either that or we'd have fifty or sixty children in a classroom, and that certainly wasn't a workable situation. So, those are the three biggest expenditures from our perspective, and this last slide, I think this is the last one, Heather, but this shows you the millage rates of the Allegheny County Northern Nine Area School Districts, and our North Hills at this point is the lowest millage rate out of the northern area, out of all of our neighbors to the north, the ones that happen to be, you know, right our border, if you will, for... right, our border, if you will, for lack of a, we are at the lowest point of the millage rate of all of those districts. You can see, at one point, the lo, the highest millage is, they're at the twenty-four point seven nine. But when you add them all together, our rate is still at the lowest. When you add the averages of the, the other schools that we are, we consider our peer group, we have an eighteen point two five percent millage rate, and the average millage rate for everybody else in our group is twenty point four seven. So, and the county average, if this makes sense, and I think it does, if you look at the last line, it's, the county average for millage rate is twenty-three point twenty-three mils. So compare our millage rate to the county average and to our neighbors to the north, I, I have to say, I, I don't think you can get better than being the lowest. So I, that is something I think that the, we have worked hard at to try to pay attention to and make sure that we kinda keep that millage rate at what we'd hope to be, would be considered an affordable rate. So I just thought it would be necessary that we kinda go back and look at where we've been and where we've come from and how we got to where we are. And so as a result of that, after doing that, that, that exercise that I did, and I spent a lot of time there going through these line items, I'm gonna support this budget. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Wogus, if I may, before I cast my vote, I, I did want to mention several things. First of all, I think that the current budget, the way it stands, for me personally, I really cannot support it. I think we could have done a better job of considering various options, and I think as a board. And as a board, I think we could have discussed those options in detail and considered pros and cons, and then arrived at some conclusion. The conclusion may well have been to increase the, the taxes. So I find that I, having said that, I find that I am, am forced, under protest, if I may, to vote yes for this particular budget, because if we don't have a budget by the end of June, then we cease to operate. We, we can't incur bills, we cannot pay bills, we just cannot function. So we have no alternative but, but to have a budget by the end of June. The thing, though, I think we need to consider is something that Mr. Wogus had mentioned, is that we find ourselves in a situation where the state mandates actions for us to take, and most of these actions are extremely underfunded or not funded at all. And so we're forced to live with a situation that we have very little control over. And when you look at the budget, I, my guess is that it's probably not more than ten to fifteen percent that we actually have control over. And even some of that ten or fifteen percent is limited control. So we have control, as an example, over the expenditure for, for transportation. But yet, we're limited in terms of what we can do. Kids need to get on buses and get to school. So we have to do the best job that we can with that. So again, my vote will be yes, but under protest.
I just want to add one more point that I, the one to make before I turn to the view, Mr. Kelly. The, the alternatives, I felt that in order to reduce or have zero tax increase or something less than there were just, we had three alternatives, at least from my perspective. One was to cut programs. The other would probably be, if you're gonna cut programs, you have to furlough teachers. And if you're gonna furlough teachers and cut programs, you have to raise class sizes. So those, if, if you don't do a tax increase, if you don't vote, or I shouldn't say, if you don't approve this budget as submitted, those were the alternatives. You could, you don't have to, you don't have to approve the budget, but you have to go in and cut some programs and furlough teachers and raise class sizes. So all three of those just didn't seem, to me, proper alternatives to, to vote no. So, any other comments on the budget? Okay, Mr. Nitti?
Mr. Wogus, I'd like to make a comment. I am going to be, I, I did not vote in favor of the budget, preliminary budget, because I had some questions about why don't we use fund balance to help offset some of the tax increases, which is against my principle anyway, but I, I wanted to investigate it. Using the fund balance to offset tax increase is a bad policy, because we, with the way we are growing, this fund balance will be needed to possibly build additional space for schools. A case in point, whenever we started to expand, we put, what, eight, eight classrooms on at McIntyre, with, with two point eight million dollars? Three. Okay, so. But we paid cash for that, because we had money in the fund balance. So that's the reason why we don't want to touch the fund balance to offset tax increase. When I ran for this job twelve years ago, I was watching for a three-year period, the Standard and Poor's rating of North Hills School District, and their student return on investment rating that they would give us, started out at well above average. Then it went down to above average. Then it went down to average. And during that period, we had the residents of this school district picking up and moving north to North Allegheny, because of the schools. The schools drive real estate values. Don't forget it. So whenever you're getting a pack, tax increase, and with the administration and the board that we have, it's a good investment. You're driving the investment of your, your property up. That's why you have to look at the taxes as an, is an investment in your property, not a detriment. And I am on a fixed income, I know what it's like, but I have absorbed it because I know, I see my house, my, my value going up in my house every year, much faster than the, the tax increase. So I'm, I'm going to be voting in favor of the tax increase.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Okay, now we have some regular items, which I talked about last week. We have the kind of regular monthly time to pay the bills, and then we have some annual things that we do once a year. So I'm gonna go through these kinda quickly, but if there's any questions, you know, please, please stop, and we can discuss them in detail. Item number seven is our general fund bills for the month. Item number eight, monthly food service fund bills. Item number nine, our scholarship fund bills. This is an annual expenditure for scholarships that was established by a donor, and once a year, at graduation time, we disburse those funds that the school district holds, you know, for the donor, and give those to students that are, have been, met the criteria for selection as the donor directed us. Number ten is the monthly budget transfers. Number eleven is the payroll for the month of May, 2019. Number twelve is our general insurance approval. This is an annual approval, so that we have, and the school district has insurance, and we can operate insurance. Number thirteen is very similar, it's an annual approval, the workers' compensation insurance. Number fourteen is our annual action to appoint the treasurer for 2019-20, which is our chief financial officer, Mr. David Hall. Again, that's done every year at the beginning of the new fiscal year. And finally, number fifteen was the facilities use fee schedule, which kept the fees and costs for personnel very close to last year's, with a few slight increases to make sure that we were able to cover our costs, and so that as outside groups other than the school use our facilities, that we are not subsidizing them, they are paying what it costs to, you know, to you, to operate the building and to put those personnel. Because we want to make it accessible, we want the people to be able to use the buildings, but we also don't want the taxpayers to pay for outside groups using the building. We want to break even on that. We're not making money, but we're covering our costs. So that's what that facilities use fee schedule does, and that's set annually every year. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion now to approve finance items seven through fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Nolish, we can move on to support services. Mr. Burnett, you got some things going there?
We have, we have a lot going on, but we discussed most of them last week, so I'll just briefly go over them. First item is, we're gonna build out the sensory room, autistic support room at the middle school, similar to what we have over at Ross. And we're gonna build out the family consumer science kitchen in the high school. Both of these projects will be handled internally by our maintenance crew, so it should be a big savings, financial savings for us. They're gonna replace some middle school and Westview stage curtains, which I know Chris was very excited to hear. They're, they're pretty old, the curtains at the stages in middle school and Westview. We're gonna replace some floor and carpet finishes in Westview Elementary and the middle school. We are gonna stabilize the cafeteria corridor in the high school. It's the, it's, what's that, Hall A? I always get it confused. There's a slight dip there that we're gonna actually get that corrected to move it level. Any of your children that go to the high school will be well aware of that, so that's gonna be taken care of. Also have bids for asphalt maintenance, the elementary campuses and parking lots. We are to reject the bills of replacement for the HVAC at the administration building, and the lunch, breakfast, and morning care prices will remain the same for next year. And there's one new item that's just been added. It's the disposition of obsolete printing equipment at the middle school. It's some old offset printing equipment that is no longer in use. The superintendent recommends, and I so moved that the board approves, support services, items one through nine.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If, if I can ask a question somewhat related to support services, is that resean update, do you happen to know that, how that's, the reseeding of that lower field?
I, I do not, that is. Dave, do you have anything on that?
Or upper field?
I believe they've completed the reseeding.
Mm-hmm.
Either in the last couple days or in the next couple days, they're supposed to go through and, and fertilize it, top dress the field.
So it's going according to schedule?
Yes.
Well, the weather hasn't been real good either.
Right, yeah.
We've had a lot of rain.
Sure.
But I know that the soccer teams are not allowed on the field, they're only using the upper fields, so.
Okay.
Okay, before we close the meeting, we still have a lot of people here, so I'm sure there, some folks want to talk. We can now move on to the public comments on non-agenda items, those that signed up to speak. Take your turn, you can step to the microphone. Ann, would you like to go first? Okay, if you would be, those of you that would speak, get up there if you'd state your name and address for the record, and we don't have to read our, our.
Good evening, my name is Diane Maxwell. I live at three hundred Cross Creek Court, Pittsburgh one five two three seven. I am a nineteen eighty-three North Hills graduate, daughter of a former North Hills elementary teacher, Carol Heinz Spiker, student teacher under the direction of the Mary Lou Stefanko, whom I hold in highest esteem, and thirty-one year veteran teacher in neighboring North Gate School District, and I serve on my district's SAP team. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Several parents are here tonight who reside in the North Hills School District, but our children attend Eden Christian Academy. If they would please stand. Doctor and Mrs. John Isis have two children who attend North Hills High School, and one daughter who attends Eden. You may sit down. Our issue tonight concerns the long-running problems with the bus transportation in the morning and especially the afternoon for Eden Christian Academy, particularly the Eden Middle and High School. These issues have existed for multiple years. We have followed and understand the logistical and financial challenges that exist for busing in general in North Hills, and we understand transport to schools like Eden adds to those challenges. We also know that the transportation is provided by a third-party company and not direct North Hills employees. We have all called ABC Transit many times directly to try to resolve problems, but ABC Transit has been very non-responsive and dismissive. Since issues persist, we found it necessary to come here tonight. Our buck stops with you. And with that, in the brief time that we have, we wanted to call attention to the major issues, if we will. Foremost, there is chronic, chronic inconsistency in the buses and the drivers that are assigned to Eden, especially in the afternoons. ABC Transit particularly does not seem to be able to commit to consistent drivers or buses. Often, the bus shows up late, sometimes not at all. No notice is given to the school or to the parents about this. The kids have to ask the school to call about it, or they have to call parents who then call the company. When the driver does show up, he or she often does not know where he or she is going. Sometimes they have a working GPS, sometimes not. Very frequently, the driver asks my daughter or other children to give them directions on where to go, and this is typically in violation of their own rule for not talking or distracting the driver. The tardiness and the lack of direction often leads to the bus taking inefficient routes or having to make dangerous turnarounds to get back on track. It requires many children to have extremely long bus rides to get home in the evenings, sometimes well over one hour for a trip that really should not be longer than twenty minutes. This is most frequent in the first and final months of the school year. Since April, we've had different drivers and buses nearly every day. The kids and parents don't know what they'll get each day as far as the experience. We also take issue with the morning requirement that there can't be an Eden bus that goes to the individual neighborhoods, requiring the students to be taken to North Hills High School to meet the bus there. Technically, North Hills will say they accommodate this by allowing the children to take an early bus that goes to the high school. But in practice, this is not effective. The bus goes through a long winding route, and there is no guarantee that it gets to the high school in time for the Eden bus. Parents have the burden to drive to the high school. In my own situation and those of others here, North Hills has claimed that it cannot send individual Eden buses onto our streets. As I stated, I live in Cross Creek off of Rochester Road, and we have photo evidence that other buses, including full-size, come into the street directly to pick up other students who attend schools such as Shady Side Academy and Winchester-Thurston. On a positive note, there have been some very nice and dedicated drivers, and we appreciate the work they've done and past and present. North Hills transportation officials have tried to help, but have, haven't given it enough attention. Eden students and tax-paying parents should not receive, we believe more than students of other schools, but we should not receive anything less either. Please make a point in the coming school year to commit to a dedicated morning bus and to hold ABC Transit accountable for consistent and experienced drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, thank you for your, are you able to leave those comments with us? Or do you have a copy of it you could leave with us?
I can get you a copy.
If you don't mind.
Yes.
If you can get it to Lori, I'd appreciate that.
Yes.
Needless to say, I completely understand your frustration, those things that should not be happening. And I promise you, we'll, we'll certainly look into that, if we already haven't started.
Well, we're gonna do a bus stop and route audit over the summer. It's something we had talked about, maybe a meeting or two ago. So this is definitely on that list to take a look at because of the issues that you brought up this evening. So that is definitely gonna be part of the routing and bus stop look that we're gonna do this summer as we're preparing for next school year.
I appreciate that.
And that's why, that's why the comments will be helpful. I was writing down a lot of the stuff that you were saying, but if we could get a copy of that, it could be very helpful for us as we begin to look at what our routes and stops look like for next year.
Very good.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question about that, and I don't know if it, who would it be directed to? Are, are the kids that are going to Eden Christian, are they on their own bus, or do they share buses with other schools, other, um, other?
If you're talking about Eden Christian Mount Nevo, which is the junior, senior high, they are scheduled, those students are scheduled to catch their, their community bus to the high school, and then they transfer at the high school to a bus that goes to Eden. As far as Eden Christian Academy, the elementary school, I'm not sure whether they share with the Catholic school across the street still or not.
They, they have their own bus.
They have their own bus now?
They have twenty students, and they still have their own bus for the elementary.
Are we having problems with the Seibert Road location?
No, it's just the Mount Nevo bus.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you once again, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think it's really important that, you know, that you brought this to our attention, because, you know, it-
because, you know, it, we need to, this is the kinds of things we need to hear, because then we can address them, and we've got, you know, the specific senior information, because that's not how we want any of our students to be treated in this community. So, thank you for coming.
Okay. Is there any, are there anybody else that would like to?
It has to, it has to talk about ABC busing. I live on Buck Hill, and I'm going to tell you, there's been at least three times I almost called that company. They come flying up and down that hill like there's no tomorrow.
On Buck Hill?
Yeah, so, well, if they're, if they're going that fast on Buck Hill, I don't know if any of you have been on that hill, but if they're going that fast on Buck Hill, how fast are they going when they're driving everywhere else? So you may want to address that with that company.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the board before we? Ladies, would you like that? All three of you?
Yeah.
Please state your names and addresses, please.
My name is Shay Sweeney, I live on ninety-five William Street.
My name is Julia Parks, and I live on nine-one-one Wellesley Avenue.
And I am Emily Schreffler, I live on three fifty-six Ridgewood Avenue.
Do y'all go to school here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, all three of us have just finished our sophomore year of high school, and we are all members of the GATE program that we have been in for a number of our school careers so far. And one of the main things that it teaches us is that we are hopefully going to be the future leaders of tomorrow, and we're trying to advocate, because we feel like a lot of time our program can get overshadowed with the movement of teachers. It just feels like sometimes it can just be used as a holding slot for a teacher. And a great example of this is our teacher for the first two years is being reassigned this year. And we're going into one of our hardest years of high school, about to pick out colleges, and we've established this bond with her, and now it's just going to be completely thrown up in the air again.
Um, I want to address some of the service projects and opportunities that we've gotten because of the GATE program. So many of our service projects and initiatives, accomplishments, and experiences would not have been made possible without the gifted program. After only two years of high school, we've already begun to use the resources the gifted program offers to make change and help others. Our gifted instructors encourage us to find ways to solve problems and be proactive, and they try their best to make sure that we have the tools to do it. I cannot tell you how many times we've walked into Ms. Morby's office with a new idea we want to see through, and how often she's given up her, her time and her energy to hear us out and try to come up with a good plan so that we can see it through.
Um, I would just like to say that we are all deeply disappointed with the reassignment of Ms. Regina Morby and with Ms. Hernandez, who primarily works with the freshman class that just graduated. Both of them were more than just a teacher to us, they were mentors and friends and someone that we could trust and someone that we had a very deep connection with, that we knew we could talk to, someone we knew would aid us with whatever challenge we take on next. Our GATE program, the kids in our program make up the top, about the top ten percent of our classes. Very frequently, we are bringing in higher test scores and many different scholarships, and earning a lot of money through those scholarships to aid us. The GATE program gives us access to career shadowing opportunities, and those opportunities greatly help us later in our lives when we are choosing our careers. It also helps us prep for SATs, allowing us to take the PSAT test in ninth grade as well as in the years afterwards, which gives us a opportunity to really figure out what skills we need to work on and what skills that we can improve to earn higher scores and gain access to scholarships such as the National Merit Scholarship. It also gives us extra enrichment opportunities, some of those being the AIU Three Apprenticeships, which both myself and Shay have participated in and plan to continue participating in. It gives us access to the CalcuSolve math competition, the ECO Challenge that PIPS runs. There's a chance to observe an open-heart surgery, where children in the program actually go to the hospital and observe as the doctors perform an open-heart surgery. And one other very popular competition is the Shakespeare Competition. The program also gives us help with mental health issues. A lot of gifted students suffer from severe anxiety and many other problems that can impact our schoolwork and our ability to learn and process information. The GATE program and the GATE teachers have communication with the CRC and the guidance counselors, and it provides us with a safe space to take a break and get our thoughts reordered. There have been many times where personally I have gone to Ms. Morby's office, because I do suffer with anxiety, and it impacts my ability to learn, because it gets so bad sometimes that I cannot process information. And it does me more harm to sit in a classroom where I feel like I'm losing control because I cannot process this information, and I feel like I'm falling behind. And when we go to the GATE room, and we have those teachers there that can aid us, we can sit down and they can help us make up that work and regain whatever we feel we've lost in those times when we're really struggling. Very often, we take time out of our personal schedules to go to the GATE room and to talk to these teachers. We make up work and teach ourselves lessons, because this is something that is extremely important to us and something that we feel helps us in everything that we do. The school tells us very often that they put students first, and in many cases, I do believe that. But it's becoming increasingly difficult to keep believing that when our program is pushed to the side and overshadowed, and our trusted teachers are taken away from us and reassigned. It is imperative for us to have experienced GATE teachers that create a connection with us, so that they truly know us and they know how best to help us, and we feel that we can continue getting our enrichment opportunities and continue feeling as if we are getting the aid that we need to really make these decisions that are truly going to impact our entire lives after we graduate with college choices and career choices. That's all we have for today, but.
Well, thank you, ladies, thank you. You're well spoken and you're well mannered, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm really proud of you, you did a great, you did a great thing. I'm glad you spoke up, and I can assure you one thing, we share your frustration, but unfortunately, we're not able to discuss personnel issues publicly, I'm sure you're probably aware of that, but we understand where you're coming from, we really do, and it's not, it's not been that we're ignoring it, it's just things, we're, we're, we have issues with labor agreements and things that, that kind of dictate where we, how we do things, so, but thank you for stepping up.
Can I just ask a quick question? Just a general question, has this happened multiple times with GATE teachers being reassigned in the high school?
Yes, the junior class that just became seniors have had two or three different GATE teachers, and I think as Julia already said, we're feeling as if it's just becoming a placeholder spot, because it, we do, we get many different teachers that are shifted around quite often, and it becomes difficult, because it's a program where you truly get to know the people that you're working with, and it's something that is greatly, like the aid that it gives us is greatly increased by someone who understands us and knows us personally.
And then I just wanted to add, I can say throughout my years in the program, I think I've had four different teachers, and I've only been in for around five years. So, a lot of times, I mean, everyone knows what it's like to have an awkward period when you first meet a new teacher or something, everyone gets that. And the difference with the GATE teachers is there's someone you know that's a constant, it's someone to keep going back to. And with all the different issues that high school brings on it, all different stress holders, like I can say that establishing a bond with one of these GATE teachers for more than a year, like I was able to get a five oh four set up, and I was able to get into many more wonderful opportunities to help me so much through education, and I, it won't be the same with how much the teachers continue getting moved around.
Yeah, thanks for sharing all that, that's, that's really helpful to know all that and your experiences.
Thank you.
I, I know this is probably not very encouraging, but I would suggest that you, that you don't give up. Here you are, three astoundingly young and articulate young women, and you've already made your place. I would say continue to, to work and to fight for what you believe in, and, and good things will happen. Thank you.
That was always the, probably the biggest message of our GATE teacher was, fight for what you believe in, and that's why we're standing here today.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
So, they're a pretty tough, tough act to follow, and I have a whole list of things here to say.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Kelly Schreffler, three fifty-six Ridgewood Avenue. I'm the parent of one of the students that was just here, and they literally said everything that I said, so I'm just going to speak from a parent's point of view. The GATE program is so important for these guys, like they said, they are top of their class, and they love the GATE program. It challenges them, it gives them engaging curriculum, it's fantastic for them, and the GATE room is, is like the place to be, because it's a safe place for them to go whenever they need, when life gets rough, and it just stinks. They need somebody right now before it gets so bad. And speaking from a personal area, Ms. Morby has been fantastic for our family. She has been a godsend for us. She's always helped Emily whenever she had any trouble throughout the year, and constant contact with us. She was never hesitant to contact me, or, and I could always contact her, the communication was always open there. And like Ann said, the connection they have with them is so deep, and it's so hard when that gets turned and flipped upside down, it really is. Also, I feel like with the turnover of the teachers, they lose a little bit of continuity in that, in that GATE program as well, and I know that's hard on the kids too, it causes them a little extra stress. And I do feel like sometimes the GATE program does get pushed aside, there's not even a website on the, on the North Hills school website. There's nowhere for us to go as parents, there's no website that lists, you know, things like that, there's just nothing there.
We're working on that.
Okay. It does feel like it's being swept under the rug, and that's, that's a bad, you know, feeling to have. But honestly, these guys said it all, there's nothing more I can say, the GATE program is fa, is fantastic. They produce highly intelligent kids who are going to go and just take over this joint when we're out of here, so, thank you so much.
You're a proud mom, that's a good job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for letting us speak tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you embarrassed your daughter.
Thank you.
That's my job. Embarrassment is my job.
Okay, please.
Laura.
Hello, my name's Trisha Getz, and my address is one forty-eighth Spruce Valley Drive, one five two two nine.
My name's Vicki Housley, I live at one forty-one McIntyre Road.
Laura Isis, one one five Radcliffe Drive, actually Annette is one of my neighbors, so.
Are you proud of that, or just?
Yeah. Definitely.
I'm just kidding.
We just wanted to bring up a few more of the issues that we're having with the Eden busing system. The one major problem that we're having is on the school delay days. So on a normal day, my son would be picked up at six-thirty for an eight AM school start. On a school delay day, since North Hills runs on an hour and a half, school delay in the high school, our children are also required to still get on the bus with them, and so he would have to get on the bus at eight AM on a school delay day when school at Eden does not start until ten AM. And most of us have, at that point, chosen to drive them in, to rearrange work schedules, to send them with friends, but I know there was one incident where a friend did send her child, and he sat, it was actually Nate, you sat there how long, Nate? He sat here at North Hills, an hour to an hour and a half, an hour and a half to two hours, waiting for that bus to take, pick him up and take him over to Mount Nevo, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for alerting us.
Yeah, thank you.
Another concern was, is just that when they are up at the upper campus at, at Mount Nevo, not only is it taking, as Diane said, over an hour to get home, the bus isn't coming for forty-five minutes to an hour after their school day ends, in fact, the office is sometimes closed up there, and so they're outside with the office closed at their building and no bus. So, and my daughter's twelve, and so these are young kids.
I'm, I'm not making excuses, but I know there's construction up in that area that sometimes I've sat in there, I, near, it's before Andorra's Restaurant, I don't know if you've, if you've been in the, it, sometimes I'm backed up for, anyway, it's not an excuse, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, they're actually admitting to not having a bus driver. They actually tell us that they do not have an assigned bus driver for that route.
Yeah, and it's been going on when there wasn't the construction there.
We're talking about the Mount Nevo campus, right? Not the one on, okay.
Yes, yes, Mount Nevo, yes.
Are these problems new to this year, or was this, has this been occurring for multiple years?
I think they escalated this year. I think it's been going on, but it's getting worse.
Well.
The afternoon piece has definitely gotten worse. The, the only other thing that, you wanted to share one thing, but the last thing I just wanted to say was that they wait at the high school here between the double doors where you check in, and there's going to be a lot of kids there next year, because I think we have five new kids, so they sit there with the doors open pretty much, because it's a constant flow of kids coming in in the winter, which we actually are thankful for, because a few years ago, they weren't allowed in the building at all, they stood out in the parking lot, so.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I just wanted to add the amount of time that our children are on the bus and at school, which leaves them with very little time for anything, which isn't fair to them as children. So they're getting on the bus at six, my son gets on the bus at six-thirty AM, goes over to the high school to get to his school that starts at eight, and then he doesn't get home till anywhere between four and four-thirty in the evening. Usually, got to get dinner, you have sports, and then homework, like there's no time for him, like he's stressed out like you wouldn't believe, because he doesn't get that release of anything to do something other than schoolwork, dinner, sports, if that makes sense. It's just not fair for a thirteen-year-old.
As Dr. Mann mentioned earlier, we're going, we're, we're looking at, we're auditing that whole schedule, so.
We just wanted you to know all the details and the extra stuff of what stresses us out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Anybody else?
My name is Leah Hale, I live at one zero six Circle Drive, Pittsburgh PA one five two three seven. I am here also in support of the GATE program as my daughter is an incoming senior. I'll be honest, I am hearing a lot of what you're speaking about tonight, I myself am an educator, and I feel like your decisions that might seem very small in the moment of Ms. Morby are actually much larger when it's a program that is competing and helping us compete with districts like a North Allegheny and Seneca that are in our neighboring, you know, outliers. And what I'm saying is that program sets us aside, and I'm, my daughter is going into her senior year, and I have felt it has been kind of placed on a back burner. I have only needed Ms. Morby this year to start speaking up as an advocate for my daughter and her scheduling, and I was very, I was quite confused on the scheduling conflicts that happened as a senior, where only ten students would be competing for a similar class, and that class was only offered at one time for the ten people that would be competing for that. And so that became a huge issue for me, and Ms. Morby was an advocate for my own daughter in making sure that she was heard and her, as an individual student, her needs were met. And so I appreciate her greatly, particularly on the high school level, with applying for scholarships like the young ladies talked about. She has a knowledge base that I think is very valuable at that high school level, and I just hope the replacement is going to have that knowledge base as well. Just reminding you that these decisions do come to play when you're in competition with districts around that help you compete at that higher level of education.
Absolutely, thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, I appreciate all the comments this evening, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you.